Ryan is absent, Sam Popo is absent, Curry.
Here.
Carsonson?
Here.
And again is absent Turner?
Here.
And here. We need approval of the minutes for the June meeting.
It's moved with corrections.
Second.
Corrections were in the names.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Carsonson?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
At this time we have SCAP updates?
We have no updates yet.
Okay. Move on to whole business?
Yes, thank you. With respect to the second plan review for Ash Pallett, this, we are requesting another continuance. As you recall, we discussed it the last time. There was some additional information that was requested from the Plan Commission before the future consideration. We're going back and forth with the applicant on the topo right now. And he's requesting a clearance of site, but not approved that based on fact there's been no topo on the property as we speak. And there are still some ancillary issues, so therefore, based on that, I request another continuance.
We have a motion for continuance of the Ash Pallett. All right, motion. Okay, second.
Second.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Carsonson?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
I think yes. Okay. So now we will go on to the zoning text amendment.
Yes, thank you, manager person. That's a record reflect. This is a public hearing pursuant to public notice and course of state statute and all applicable ordinances. And chairperson, this matter comes with really as a housekeeping matter. As you recall, back in 2020, we did a comprehensive update of the village's zoning ordinance. As you recall, there were extensive hearings at the Plan Commission, public hearings. It was a fairly ambitious project. A lot of discussion took place on all kinds of facets of zoning. Reviewing that ordinance, you all have an opportunity to review the ordinance every few years and try to provide an update where appropriate, if the end of date is living document. So we live and learn. And based on my discussions over the past two years, there were several, the first aspect, we are specifically requesting two amendments this evening. Section 1051, which is the matrix, specifically, we're requesting some updates of uses in the B1 and B2. Those are two commercial districts. There were certain uses which were inadvertently left out. And I'll go through those uses. So we are requesting an update of our use matrix, again, specifically section 1051. For, again, for the records, for the commercial areas of B1 and B2. In addition, we are also requesting a slight modification or update of the village's recreational, recreational vehicle section. That code is actually incorporated in our parking section. I'll review that specifically, but for the record, we are seeking some additional language. And I'll explain to you why we're seeking that modification as relates to recreational vehicles. So with that, I wanted to kind of go through the matrix. I think you have the matrix in front of you, which comes directly from the village's current zoning ordinance. Anything that's highlighted red are new changes, new uses that SCAP is requesting. So I wanted to start with B1. So again, for the record, anything that's in black comes directly from our current code as it relates to uses. The first amendment I'm requesting for B1 is daycares. We actually, we've had discussions with daycares. Now, we do not have daycares actually as a permitted or special use in our commercial districts. Again, for pretext, staff did look at other adjacent communities, their zoning ordinances. We want to make sure that our proposals are generally consistent with our sister neighbors as relates to our zoning ordinance. So those communities included Fox Lake, Litterhurst, Big Billah, and Gray's Lake. We did look at those ordinances and want to see, are directly daycares a either special use or permitted use in adjacent communities? And yes, they are. Oh, again, neither the B1 or B2 district even address daycares. So I've been in discussions with previous daycares and instead of doing something complicated like creating a PUD, it would just be simple to add daycares. What I am requesting is that daycares be added as a special use, not a permitted use, but a special use. And the reason why I say I'm requesting that is in many cases because of different parameters as well as to safety as relates to children, traffic. I think it's reasonable to look at the criteria to make sure that we look at not only off-site land issues, but any potential impact on other uses that may not be appropriate next to a daycare, which will make a daycare maybe inappropriate for a commercial lot. So again, this will just provide the Plan Commission more opportunity for more review of daycares. Second use that I'm requesting actually in the B1, I think generally are all the other uses. Most of the changes are in B2. So again, I'll walk you through B2. So again, anything in black is current uses. Anything in red or again to the record is new uses that we're requesting. So for B2, requesting that fuel stations, fuel stations, i.e. gas stations were left out inadvertently. So we again requesting that fuel stations be added to B2. So, you know, Thorntons or Casey's came in here. There will be a special use consideration. Again, sometimes because especially as the new stations, new trend is to have larger stations because of the potential impact that some of these fuel stations have on adjacent properties, we are requesting that be considered a special use. This will give again additional review considerations by the Plan Commission when reviewing fuel stations. Fuel stations with car washes, again, that's being added. We're requesting that be a special use. Car washes would be a permitted use as a new use. As it relates to retail, I'm providing a little more detail, a little more specificity to retail. So specifically, I've broken retail out to apparel stores, appliance stores, art galleries, antique stores, department stores, hardware stores, hobby shops, general retail and pharmacies. It'll all be permitted use in the B2 district. Again, that is consistent with most zoning ordinances in our surrounding communities. And then the only other changes as it relates to medical uses, we have numerous medical uses which are permitted. I did add veterinary clinics, which are our current ordinance silent on, so I added a vet clinic as permitted use. There was some ambiguity in offices, so I just simply added offices as permitted use. Commercial trade schools, I added just based on my review of other ordinances. So it was like a hair school that would be a permitted use. A lot of times, generally, the new trend is to see those in inline retail spaces, these commercial schools. And then based on current trends, if you look at where things like nursing homes, assisted living, memory care, daycares, nursery schools, they generally want to be commercial corridors. Especially assisted living facilities and memory care, they want visibility now. So the trend is, based on my previous discussions with memory care and assisted living, that locate those facilities on commercial corridors. And then again, relating to daycares, that would be a special use. So with that, that is the highlight of the changes in the matrix, B1 with use for B1 and B2 changes in our use matrix. So perhaps we should discuss this to make sure, see that Plan Commission has the concerns or disagreements. And then we can move on to recreational vehicle changes.
Mr. Curry?
Nursery school?
Yes. Nursery school is purely educational, so that's, it's a use that's used referenced in many zoning ordinances.
So daycare, nursery school, or?
Different. So nursery school, which is purely probably educational. I mean, obviously, I think the clear trend is for daycares, but there are technically just nursery schools. So American Planning Association has a definition. I'll be more than happy to incorporate the definition into.
Okay, because I have, referencing back to like, and I have my kids in daycare.
Right.
Turned into a school in the later years during that.
I think, I agree, I think ninety, ninety, probably ninety-five percent of all, you know, daycares will encompass that use. But again, specificity, I'll be more than happy to provide a definition or we're not comfortable with day, I'm sorry, nursery schools, we can remove it. Just have a broader interpretation of daycares or preschools. And I think nursery schools, some, I think.
I think once you have an infant onto like, you know, four years old and then they go into their educational portion of the daycare, their nursery school, then immediately at that point, if they have that age group of kids, that could be daycare. So it would be a special use for lots.
Right.
And then it fits within that category, so we'll be fine.
Yeah, I mean, that's a fair point. We can just have a broader interpretation of daycare, which would include nursery schools or preschools or whatever. I'd be fine with that. So I can make that change.
Mr. Carsonson?
No questions.
Mr. Turner?
I see issues on my end, no questions.
And I get the same question with Mr. Curry.
So for the record, I'll just strike that and we'll just expand the definition of daycares and include preschools or nursery schools. Now directing your attention to, I'm such. Directing your attention to dash ten dash twelve dash two E. That's actually our parking section of our zoning ordinance, which going through municipal code again, the only section that I can find that addresses recreational vehicles is our current language in our zoning ordinance. There is no standalone recreational vehicle, standalone ordinance in the municipal code. So for the record, our current regulations are as follows. Parking in the front yard, parking of vehicles, recreational vehicles, boats or trailers, and areas of the front yard other than the driveway is prohibited. All recreational vehicles, boats or trailers must be parked on a hard and improved surface. Okay, so that's our current regulation. That's the only thing we have as relates to recreational vehicles. Going back to actually the old zoning ordinance still is adopted. I'm sorry, I forgot the last year, but I think it was sometime in the late seventies and it was modified in the nineties. Reviewing that specific language, I think perhaps is even more comprehensive. So you'll see the proposal. There's a proposal in this section to modify the ordinance to basically prohibit parking. So I'm going to read that to you. Parking or storage of any vehicles or park thereof, including but not limited to trailers, campers, boats, and recreational vehicles on lawn areas in the front or side yard, and areas set aside for landscaping, or any other areas not surface or off-street parking as provided in the section shall be prohibited. And there are specifically specific provisions. So recreational vehicles and equipment may be parked on private property in a garage, in a rear yards, inside yard, shall be placed on a permitted driveway surface, i.e. concrete, asphalt, or approved bricklayers. So any recreational vehicle must be parked, again, on improved surfaces. I've outlined specifically what constitutes an improved surface in located in compliance with the regulation of this chapter. Number two, and this is the reason why we're proposing the amendment, because we doubt that this code enforcement issue specifically had no provision outlawed this. Overnight parking of a recreational vehicle or equipment on a public street or within the right of way is prohibited. So we had a case where somebody is hiding on a temporary basis on a building street or trailer. So this provision will prohibit that. No recreational vehicle should be parked within ten feet of any adjacent dwelling on an adjacent lot or shall be parked within one foot of a lot. And in any, I'm sorry, and in any event drainage of the lot must be retained. So where you can't park if you're obstructing drainage. Again, this specific provision came from the old ordinance. That was in effect prior to our zoning update in 2020. No recreational vehicle or equipment shall be parked in front yards or side yards adjacent to a street. I think with that, I think we can discuss that. That may not be clear. There may be some tweaking as I read it, but I think what that's saying is if it's a corner lot, you don't want, you know, the recreational vehicle parked on the side of the house that was adjacent to a corner street. And we can, we can discuss that change, that update. But that's, that was actually in the old ordinance. Number E, recreational vehicles or equipment parked in the side yard must be located further back than a front building line adjacent property. So in other words, we don't want, you know, it's kind of similar defenses. We don't want that recreational vehicle parked somebody technically their front yard to adjacent property. So somebody has the house next door and maybe their house, you don't want technically parked in the front yard adjacent to that residence. So it would be, you have to be, the recreational vehicle would have to be behind basically the building line, behind the house of the adjacent property. Again, that was from the old zoning ordinance. Let me see here. Finally, vehicles used for other purposes. The boundary shall not be used for dwellings, travel trailers, tent trailers, campers or couch, campers or couch. In other words, you can't live, can't park your trailer in your front driveway and have second family live there. I think that's what that section says. So staff is looking for the input of this proposal. And for the record, we all know that ANIAC has always been very sensitive historically for recreational vehicles. We're the center of recreational, the center of recreational activity in Lake County, boats. And so we want to be sensitive. You don't want to create a prohibitive or cumbersome ordinance that would restrict people from using their property to store RVs. I wasn't, you know, I wasn't aware of any, a lot of controversy based on the old ordinance. So I thought that would be a good place to start. So again, we allow RVs to be stored. They can be used for storage. Your property could be used, your property could be used for storing vehicles, RVs. But there are some reasonable parameters. So that, we're looking for a motion to adopt changes to the B1 and B2 use matrix. Also looking for adoption amendment to the recreational vehicle section ten dash twelve dash two, specifically dash E. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions or open up for general discussion.
So the only portion I have here that's written in red is the second paragraph, which last line says all recreational vehicles, both trailers, must be parked on a hard improved surface.
Right.
So you're saying E is something that we're adding, which is recreational vehicles or what we're parking outside yard must be located farther back from the front building.
That's correct. That's all. I'm sorry, I should, I should run mine off that. But that whole section, that whole section is technically new.
So A F?
Correct.
Okay.
But again, for the record, it was pulled from the old ordinance. I just pulled it from the old ordinance.
Okay, so E, specific to that one, recreational vehicles and equipment parking in the side, side yard must be located farther back than the front building line adjacent property.
Right.
The only problem I have with that is we have houses in our subdivisions, which has the house set forward, the garage is set back. And then you have side, side view of what could be the vehicle be in front of and in view of the house.
Okay.
So that, that's the only problem I have in that scenario.
That's fine. So I'm trying to think of what's the issue.
If it's a big of a deal, then, you know, maybe we adjust it. If it's not, then, you know, let's just at least open up your discussion. Because they're, they're like my neighbor, they're one, they're, when I have to set back and cycle them from their dining room. So if they're sitting there having a nice holiday dinner, looking out the window and see me parking an RV or boat or trailer or utility, you know, trailer or whatever, then that's not going to be very pleasant for them.
No, I understand your point. I'm just thinking out loud here how we, how we modify the language to address that concern. So as a drafting question, we can, I'm just thinking out loud here.
If we set, from what I've seen is most garages under those circumstances are about ten feet behind the front building line.
Right.
In fact, we actually encourage it now.
Right.
So.
So.
If we have something that says setting it ten feet behind the front building line, that way it's not protruding or impulse or, and maybe that would be sufficient enough to hide that vehicle behind their house and that invisible.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. You want to incorporate specific amount, distance behind the building line. That would probably address most of those circumstances.
It's still there and come up.
Because you can park the vehicle in your side yard. So there really should be no hardship. You just push it back a little further.
Exactly.
In fact, it may be in your backyard, it may be actually be better. Should be maybe slash side slash backyard for the street.
Right.
So I'm fine with setting that back. Just incorporating ten feet for the front building line. That makes sense.
Which way?
This portion of the thing? I will leave it to this. Turner?
I agree with Mr. Curry. Plus I've grown up in our house through floodwater, it was ANIAC that we were set for the forty feet or not, or less than forty. Which is interesting. I feel as though like as if ten feet apart most of the time, but maybe not every time. So there is some of these scenarios where someone may be.
But I believe it's covered in here where it says to your neighbor's property.
Right.
To your neighbor's.
To your neighbor's property. So if your neighbor's property line is forty feet back from yours, and it's to that.
Right.
And it's to that. So you're covering, you're covering your neighbor basically to make sure you're. Or unless you can't go outside, that's on.
Right.
And here's that where the line of street in the city where.
Two seven eight.
The recreational vehicle, which shows parts in front yards or side yards adjacent to a street. But you're using corner lot.
So maybe like corner lot.
Yeah.
Well. And then, because when it says adjacent to the street, that means it's not the side of the lot. And if then if they want to put the other stuff, they can, so. Say corner lot, then it's like full size.
Can we intercheck that? So I live on a corner lot. My side yard is on toward the street. But again, our driveway and we have another driveway that sits down, that's asphalt that we could put. So you're right, if you say corner lot, then that will be.
It's full size.
Full size.
I will wait.
So I'd like to open this to the audience. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the subject? Yes. And since we're asking the public about this, I would like to ask, is there anything at the first change that you would like to speak to, to the first regarding the zoning changes?
Me?
Okay.
All right, so just a couple of questions this year. I'm not actually trying to figure out our HOA system. But an HOA system, you see these laws.
Yes. If your HOA says you cannot have our recreational vehicles, which actually many do, that trumps this. It's a more restrictive regulation. The bills will not enforce that. We will not enforce the HOA regulations. But your HOA has legal right to enforce that.
And then following me with my next question. Would it make sense or does it make sense? Just thinking out loud what you're talking about. We do live in a recreational area. I know specifically people that do own very large motorhomes and/or boats. Sometimes for winterization, summerization, they bring them home for let's call it forty-eight hours and they park in the driveway, clean everything out, they wash the thing down, they get it prepped for winterization, summerization, and they take us wherever they're going. So is that something that we potentially want to maybe take a look at and or explore, just for the amount of people that potentially have boats, recreational vehicles? But yeah, just a question.
I don't have a problem with that. Our association has that in our bylaws. They allow, I believe it's ten, ten days or five days to have a boat or a trailer or whatever bought in on your driveway. You clean it, you get it prepped and ready, you take it out of organization, take it out to lake, but they're still. So I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all. But you should probably have a timeline.
Right.
To give them an opportunity, probably, probably seven days a week would be acceptable.
Is that all?
True.
Yeah, I think ours will probably have this, that I could probably my HOA, but I believe it's like four, five. Yeah, our, our HOA has to pack outside the door on like K five. And I know that not all these things are working at hand. But I was just thinking more generically for the village itself, you could get into this scenario where someone brings it home and wants their, their days to clean out, then we're getting a call. So just, I think it's the idea of the street, maybe like that.
That's fine. We can add that. I can add that language.
So I have a question, Mr. Eric, and F, vehicles used for other services. What if there's an emergency? What if a house works?
Right.
And they would like to put their motorhome or their camper or whatever, trailer, on the property not to sleep in, but to be able to use as they're working on and doing things to get their house back together?
Well, I think the way this is drafted, that would probably be prohibited.
Correct.
So, I mean.
Yeah, it's something that, you know, you think, yeah, a special permit that you can come in for or, you know, for time or not at all. I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can modify that to give some discretion. I don't think you want to vary it because that's not going to work just from a practical perspective now.
Can it be an act of God clause?
Well, there's people who remodel their house and you'll bring in a trailer that has materials and you just have to have it as a store and work out with tools and so on and so forth. We do that at jobs that's consistent. I mean dumpsters. That would, that would involve dumpsters being part of this. So then dumpster, I know, I know that for me requires you to pull specific permit for a dumpster to drive. That's a little extreme to me, but.
Maybe the other question is, do people have objections if the in-laws come and stay in the RV your driveway, people do that for a week? I mean, is that something that you support or something you don't support? Because that's probably happening as we speak.
That's going to be moving on my end. My subdivision by our bylaws, they were in a model period. So you have people within the village or the older areas that that could happen.
For me, I'm talking about an act of God, something, something like that where, you know, they don't have another place to go, but they have this RV that, well, they could have another place to go. They couldn't sleep in it, but they could use it during the day when they're there or I, you know, just.
I wouldn't even mind if they slept in it. It's likely would happen if they had something that they have. Makes sense to me, being compassionate to somebody.
Right.
Going through a bad situation.
I can add language if there's an emergency.
Special permit?
Special permit.
Special parking permit for your driveway for.
Because we did just have the extreme circumstances. And we did have a house burn and, you know, it would be nice to be able to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. It's also quite a, a, a state of the art.
Special circumstances, yeah. Which, you know, you kind of your staff to understand, run it, take care. You see that something comes up that's going to be, you know, it's definitely too much. Special circumstances, may in most cases.
So then emergency purpose, right? Not given by the laws, is it?
No, I would not say it was the laws that.
I'm going backwards, what I was explaining about cleaning your RV out for seven days. Technically, bringing the RV out, maybe one, for seven days, maybe including an hour. So there would be kind of people there, but I think what are we trying to accomplish? Seven days and an hour, in my opinion, probably not the big deal. Try and stop this summer park there for two and a half years.
That's exactly it.
Right, or literally, or putting out the street and letting out the street.
So I mean, in my opinion, if the in-laws stay for seven days, something that people being able to, you know, actively live on.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the seven days, what's to stop someone from taking it for seven days, leaving it for a day and coming back for another seven days?
It has to be removed.
That would be, that would be kind of confusing situation.
Well, I understand. But if you're saying you're allowed for seven days and you don't have a, that you come back in two days. That can turn into a situation someone.
It could. It could.
Well, technically, it's a great thing. And what we're trying to say is it's a seasonal rotation of the vehicle, right? Summerization, winterization, getting out of the, so is it? You're allowed seven days, it's this long span, although the season changes or I don't know. It's like if someone come on that, that stuff.
Or is it a max, you know, maximum of seven days? Just keep it simple, maximum of seven days, but then six month period without, without your special permit.
Right.
Not a special permit. So it'll be a maximum.
So people will find a way around it, they'll be writing that. So if they say seven days, they'll take it for seven days, they'll leave it for two. Come back and they'll say, we only had it here for a day. You know, and you're going to run into that.
That's true.
And you know, there's a potential we can come back and amend the ordinance again. It can, if there's a major coenforcement issue, then that's unfortunate how, why we amend ordinances. Because there's something we didn't foresee. So we come back, we amend it to address that.
Sure.
Any further discussion? How many?
We should do approve something text amendment twenty-two dash oh five? In the matrix?
Yes.
With changes?
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Carsonson? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes?
Thank you.